Good evening, everyone. Thank you so very much for joining us tonight for our special board and ed meeting. The time is 7:07. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Blackman.
Here.
Listra.
Here.
Here, and the board is present. The first item on the agenda, District 161 Math Bowl Contest.
Certainly. Our sponsors here, welcome. Uh, Jennifer, this is Gene Davis.
Alrighty. So I'm going to coach the Division B, uh, but, uh, Division A, I'm going to call up first. That was our first and second graders. So Connor Boyko, come on up. He won third place. There's Samuel O'Shea here. Oh, Samuel. How about Josiah Sharp? Brayden Whitmore? Alex Marlowe? Brady Williams? Shane McGathie? Jacobi Pittman? Alright, so that was our Division A team. Alright, I was in charge of the Division B team, and I just have to tell you, I'm there. Oh, take a picture, oh, Dallas first, okay. So we have the third and fourth grade team, and I have to tell you, while they were at their team event on grading papers, I was a nervous wreck, and I'm waiting for the team competition. I'm waiting, I'm looking, where are they, where are they for lunch? And they come up, and the first thing they say, I go, "How'd you guys do?" They go, "Well, he's called Mr. Mustard because he put mustard on his cookie." I go, "What about the Kenken puzzle?" They go, "Oh, we got all that." So anyway, we did come in fourth place out of 22 districts, and so, um... So here was our, our team captain. So she was in charge of turning in the final draft. Kaitlyn Chung came in fifth place. Janu Raju came in sixth place. I don't know if Josie's here. She was our alternate. I don't see Josie, I don't see Chloe. And Alex was also part of our team. He received a sixth place award also for fourth grade, and he is not here tonight. And is Max Cuevas here? Alright, then that's it for our team meet. Thank you.
She's from Blossom Hills.
Okay, I'm Gene Davis. I got to coach, uh, Division D. I'm going to start, though, by giving out the Division C certificates. They were coached by a small alternate out of Blossom Hills. Thank you. And, um, they are the fifth graders, where Dawa Groen? Cormac Saunders? And Nikolai Lawrence? Division C also consists of sixth graders. Um, we have Johnny El- Elberico? Noel Dolan? And Gus Zilman? And this is your Division C team. Cormac did take, um, second place overall in the competition. Last one to cast Division D, which is the team I coached. Fortunately, Division D is made up of seven and eighth graders. Three eighth graders who are currently at Great America or hopefully on the way home. So, for sixth graders, we have Ayende Kidd, who's here tonight. Not here tonight, but who took, um, third place overall was Jack Pierrot, seventh. And, um, Jayquan Raffin was the other seventh grade member of the team. Our eighth graders who are not here tonight were Dean Barrow, Liam Nelson, and Samuel Kerwitz. They all did a great job. Dean took first place overall individual of all the eighth graders present, so he got the number one spot, and our team took first place. Next item on the agenda, audience promise, and we brought the audience number to 6:00. Keep moving. Item four, superintendent's report, I guess, Ben.
Hope everyone had a great Memorial Day weekend and had an opportunity to spend time with your loved ones and just take a moment to recognize the amazing contributions of our service of ed and man, and give it so much for our country. But very grateful to do that. We're certainly in the home stretch of our school year, and that's highlighted by the fact that the students have recognized tonight who are in the eighth grade who weren't present because they are on their Great America field trip today. Keeping with the schedule, that's going to be followed by the eighth grade dance on Friday evening and graduation on Monday, June 3rd, 7:30 PM at Homewood Blossom High School. Everyone should have their gowns and all of the necessary accessories. So if you need anything or if you have any questions on this, you can reach out to Courtney Manning, and she'll get you straight away. We're looking forward to the graduation event. It's always a fun opportunity to see those eighth graders one last time before they head on to whichever high school that they're going to attend. But as we enjoy the end of the school year, it's also a great time to remind everyone about our end of the year party, which will be held, um, Monday, June 10th at 6:00 PM at Parker Junior High. We have a board meeting at 5:00 on June 10th at Parker Junior High. Just a reminder, I'll send that along. We should be done pretty quickly. Our meeting should probably take around 30 minutes. So it should be fairly quick, uh, but then that'll give us an opportunity to wrap up the meeting and get out to the end of the year party. Lots of fun activities are planned, food trucks, games, everything like that. I really just want to thank our district PTO and all their hard work because they went through putting this together. And it should be a nice event and hopefully a new tradition in our community. We always start off with our meet and greet before school starts. This is a great way to end the school year. That's it, everyone.
Any questions or comments? Um, just, I would like to echo what you just said. Kudos to PTO for being able to pull this off. We really appreciate it. We, um, really started enjoying the back-to-school event, and we thought it would be a great way to end the school year, same way we started it. Um, so thank you for being able to pull it off. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is an action item. It's the only action item, and that is actually why this is called a special board and ed meeting, because we actually have one item to vote on. Um, so, can I please have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? So move. Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Listra?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yep.
Lanier?
Blackman?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and the motion will pass. Next item on the agenda, STEAM, Fuse Program update and next steps.
Like to welcome Mr. Groun, this baby to the front for a quick conversation just about STEAM at Three Hills and Views at Parker Junior.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Um, Fuse, I'm not really sure where I should correct my eyes, but I guess, um, two off. Obviously Fuse was, it was our first year doing it. For those of you who don't know, it is from Northwestern University, the Grand, the Heart for Foundation. Uh, Mr. Hunter brought it, and thank you, Mr. Hunter, for doing that. Um, it's been quite an experience, surprise. There we go. So it started off last summer. I went to Northwestern for two days, and they had a seminar. That seminar was mainly about the philosophy of Fuse. What they, they really wanted, you can kind of take and do what you want with what they give you, and certain schools do different things. But I really bought into like what they were saying. And Fuse program as, as they, um, envision it is where the students have a choice. So there's a multitude of different challenges that they can do. Um, the students get to choose the different activities that they do. They get to choose who they work with, they get to choose to do it by themselves, whether collaboratively, they get to work at their own pace. And I'm more of a facilitator in this rather than, okay, everybody, this is how you do this. So it's them kind of experimenting and figuring things out, and they have the Fuse website that for some things gives them set-by-set directions, and for some things just gives them general science concepts, and then the students need to apply those. Um, so what we actually get with the Fuse program is, uh, materials, 2D printers, access to the Fuse site, um, and support. So, starting off the year, um, I, I struggled a little bit because, like I said, they did not focus on like the technical training, and that's one of the reasons why I didn't change it up, because I knew, oh, man, I'm going to learn like so much with this job. Um, and I have, um, but at the beginning, I did not know how to work 3D printers. Did, I tried, and I tried, and I tried, and that was actually a good thing in the long end. And so, and I didn't know really about the challenges. As much times I could have put in, there's no way that I could have covered all of that and then like fully prepared. There's just no way that I could have. Um, but, so through that, the students go, hey, you can try these different challenges, and they're, okay, some interest here, and some interest there. And so I started, as, as they were struggling a little bit, I started to share my struggles. Like, well, it's taken me, you know, two weeks to figure out how to do this 3D printer. And in life, this is, this is what happens. You have, you have talent, what do you, what do you need to do? You just need to try. This isn't a big mystery, hopefully, in anybody, how you're successful. You just try and keep trying. Um, so as I started to discuss those things with the students, the students were like very interested to hear teachers talk about like, oh, I don't know, you know, how to do all of these different things. I don't have all the answers. It comes with like answers. Um, and so through that, I thought, and from the beginning, this is like not a graded course, so I thought, well, you know, how is this going to go? I never obviously taught something that was not graded, and so how are the students going to be motivated? And what I found out was, I need to break down those barriers to like students getting engaged. And so the first thing is just try new things. So one of the things that I did was said, okay, well, they were really receptive to me talking about trying new things. So I tried to have them think about all the things that they could do since they were like in first grade. Think of all the different things that you can do since then, right? You can do all these things, and now it's only new, but one spot at a time, it was brand new. So I showed them some pictures of me doing brand new things, monkey jumping and skydiving. And they, you know, if you ask the, the junior high students, you want to see some pictures of me not looking very cool there? Yes, absolutely, absolutely do. Um, and so from that, we started to have a conversation about when you try new things, sometimes it feels a bit scary or you don't know how it's going to go, because some of them are hesitant. And so through that, they were, they started to look at us and talk about, oh, when I was a kid, the first time that I did this, I was a little bit nervous, or I didn't know how it was going to go. And so they started to kind of reflect like, yeah, I can do a lot of things, but I did have to start off as, as it being new. And then the second thing is, can't be afraid to face it. I think when everybody's young, you just, oh, let me try, let me try, let me try. But in junior high, you're much more self-conscious about, oh, you might, how am I going to be perceived by everybody else? So talking with them about like my struggles with the 3D printer and when I screwed up the garage proifier, um, again, we had conversations about what, what are some things that you've tried, or it didn't go right? Sometimes when you try something new, it goes well, sometimes it doesn't. Um, and so those two things, implementing growth mindset and, um, the concept of grit, really, I think, helped the students. Other things that I've done is I've organized the challenges. There are lots of different challenges that I have in the fourth grade. So they can't do everything in fourth grade. Um, this could, this course could last the whole year. Um, so as I learned more about the challenges, I started, um, kind of ruling down, like, these are the basic ones that I wanted to start with, so that we'll have some early success, to learn how to use the Fuse site, um, and learn how to collaborate and get their materials and things like that. Um, like I said, some of the challenges are experimental in nature, where they have to try, try this, try this, try this. And some of them are, um, for kind of direct instruction from the Fuse site. So there's a mix of those. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to do with kind of limiting the number of challenges, at least at the very beginning, was that they can collaborate because they're working on the same things rather than having everybody else do all these interactive things. Um, and then I really wanted to make sure that I was recognizing their achievements, um, because to achieve these things, I was, I was not helping them. Like, what they, what they achieved, they weren't really doing it on their own. I would give them some helpful hints and things like that. So we have a boss board, and at this point in the year, whenever a student, um, leaves a certain level, I have a pal bell that I have in cross country, and I ring the pal bell, I'll announce everybody, level one, LED lights, and announce the student's name, so everybody knows like they have just achieved something. Um, and then if they get through all of the levels, um, of that particular challenge, then their name goes up on the board. So again, that's another motivational factor, recognizing their achievements, and for some students, that's very motivating. And so the next steps, um, I want to incorporate, because I'll have progression of sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um, this year was pretty much all the same, sixth, seventh, and eighth. But as I go forward, I want to kind of have the progression as they go through, and I think I am going to add one more mindset there and talk about how the brain physically does change when you're learning new skills. Um, when they understand that, I, I think that helps, well, research has shown that. Um, and finally, as they go through the seventh and eighth graders, they'll have more and more challenges that they'll be able to, to do. So thank you. Um, I also gave recording, although it's kind of bad, um, like a video of the students doing some awesome things. So, thank you.
With Serena, we did Creative Learning Systems, and, um, this year in June, there'll be a week where all the new STEAM teachers for each school will come, and they're going to come to train, and we'll go through like my, the kit that I have, and so we'll kind of, um, work together with the facility from the company that will come, which will help me as well. If you want to see our projects, follow us on Twitter. Um, I won't play these videos, but this is just some of the projects that, um, stood out in my mind. That's a first grader, we made a green screen project, and he was teaching his class. Um, I had a first grade small group, it was like the best part of my year on Wednesday morning, seven first graders for like a half hour genius hour, and they put together a green screen project that they shared with their class before they jumped into their planet, um, Star City, and he was teaching them all about his business. So that was just something he was passionate about, he wanted to do it, so it was like this was his opportunity to kind of follow what he was passionate about. He got all the, the six other little first graders were excited about it. So, um, that was a really cool opportunity that we were able to fit into our schedule that Serena, because, um, kids have STEAM for an hour every week, and then there was little half hour slots each grade level, got to take, um, a group of kids to the lab. The other video was just a fourth grader, we finished our Serena 500, um, this week when they designed some cars and they raced them, and, um, her group completely failed, and she's like, oh, you don't fail, um, as long as you learn. And so that was kind of at the end of each, um, hour, we always reflect in our e-portfolios, but also out loud. So the kids stand in front of the whole class, um, they take the floor, and then they share out, um, how did you fail today? Oh, my gosh, today I failed that way, and I learned, and this is what I'm going to do differently. And so it's pretty amazing from fifth grade down to K. The little kindergartners standing up, and everyone's like, good job, you failed! What are you going to do differently? And so I can't imagine how awesome it's going to be once those kinders are in fifth, how they're going to embrace that, um, kind of, uh, engineered design process that it's going to really dump, you know, they keep going. Um, the other video, it's just, um, fifth grade presented, um, they each took a making making, they built their own circuit, and then took a topic they were passionate about, but they wanted to teach somebody else. And so we opened it up to the whole school, and they came in and, um, they presented their projects, and, um, one fifth grader presented about, um, colors, um, but they did it in five different languages, um, and so the kinders came in and tried everything out. Um, this video I just shared because it was a, she was a kindergartner, and she said, I'm, uh, six years old, and I'm, I'm going to be an engineer. And so I just think, um, I'm all about the girl power, and it was just like these girls growing up, putting that heart set on, and they were like, I'm going to be an engineer. I was like, maybe I wish I had that when I was a kid. So I just think like, overall, like, that's the biggest aha I've had from this program is that, um, these kids are just like using the vocabulary and saying like different design skills and, and thinking of that as a career choice. So it's pretty amazing. Um, the, these are just different projects. You can see it on Twitter, all kinds of, all kinds of projects, like from robotics, circuitry, all the way down to sustainability, kind of ended the year with that. Um, we've done K1, 2, kind of does whole group, um, and then 3, 4, 5, sometimes does whole group. The way our schedule works, it doesn't really, um, I'd have to do kind of topic level in order for each grade to be able to use all the tools. There's not enough to do, like enough kits to do all, um, all different grades with those kits. So, um, I've learned along with them. I had no idea how to use a Spiro until the fourth graders and I built it, and then we were having a robotics war with it. Um, so I had no training whatsoever until Twitter and YouTube and fourth and fifth graders taught me. So it was pretty amazing, but these are just some of the projects that we've done this year and, um, but taking it through all different levels. Like Ozipots are just like a robotics thing that they take in through pollination. So like I'll take topics from each grade level science that they're supposed to be studying, and then I'll gear the robotics lesson toward that specific topic. Those are just more successes. I love when the kinders came in, going, oh, my gosh, yesterday that kid said can't, but don't worry, afterwards he thought about it and said yes. Um, and so they're just really getting that thinking, um, through it. They're constantly reflecting on our four Cs, um, at that event. Um, opportunities for growth. Um, for me, the biggest thing that we lacked this year was getting out to the community and connecting it more. Um, I know Homewood Science Center does that amazing. I, I can't say enough good things about that place, but they really have an awesome connection to, to their community, and this year we really got to see, but so many different things that I couldn't process, like connecting it. I was still trying to figure out how to use it. So that's definitely next year, I'm thinking bigger. Um, so if you could help in that, I'd love to. Um, and then the portfolios, our, our kids use Google Slides to report all of their work, and, um, they can build a grid, and then, okay, times that clean up, they have to take it all down. It's just like, oh, such a defeat, like to work so hard and then just have to tear it all down. Um, and so taking, uh, pictures and videos of their work was really like, um, satisfying to them, so they could reflect on it and grade themselves, and then look back on their work this year. Um, but, um, second is they're really slow to Google Slides, and so by next year, they'll be so much faster, so we'll get that ball rolling faster. And then the learning curve for me, when I was like right click to the kindergartners and they're like, what's my bike? And I was like, oh, my gosh, like I didn't, I didn't even think about that kind of challenge, um, for the littles, so, um, but it's been pretty awesome. Um, the lap of walls was a challenge. It's very loud. I like it. Bert doesn't mind it, but, but it is a very challenging space. It's like teaching in the middle of Target, um, and then you lack a lot of storage. So the design of the building is just a challenge that we're overcoming. That's it.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I'll comment. Um, I think probably the biggest takeaway was seeing my fourth grader be able to come home with her Chromebook and to show, like I did this today, show me actual pictures, and then a creative slideshow, and this, I think, I think that interaction, um, was probably the biggest, um, takeaway, maybe takeaway, the biggest plus of this was that they're able to bring all this stuff home and show their parents what they're doing, and just that they're being exposed to all aspects of STEAM is huge, and I'm so grateful that we have a district that is giving this opportunity to our students. So you guys clearly are invested in this, and I'm grateful that you're putting your, uh, your grit into making sure our students are getting the best, so thank you.
If you have time, please watch the video. If you have time.
Yes.
Pure joy from middle school students.
Don't see it very often.
No. That's fair.
Two questions. One, I'm just trying to understand, but what we just saw, and great job. One, I'm just trying to understand, but what we just now saw, great job, great job. Is that going to be replicated in the upcoming year of schools?
Yes. And actually, one of my questions, first, I echo, actually, great job. And I can tell that a certain partner teacher really loves this program. So I'm excited to see that. So, but my question is, I'd love to know, now that we've done this four year at Serena, like, how will we think about, what are the lessons learned that we can now think about as we move this program into the other schools? And you may not have a full answer, but the board would really love to know, lessons learned, and like, your end slides, I thought were very helpful in terms of noise and walls and things like that. But, you know, everything else, curriculum, budget, like, I would really love to know for how will we think about this?
I kind of put like a modulus as I went through it, like, "Oh, I would have never put carpeting," or, "Oh, I should have done this." And so like throughout the year, I kind of made a list of things that like, or the curriculum that didn't work, and what I would have scratched and gotten instead. So I have a list that I started in a doc that I could share.
That would be fantastic. Yeah, that would be great. You have another question?
And a second question, if possible, to give a copy of slide shows I tried this week.
I have a question for you, Mr. Ramar. What do you see, like, in moving forward, what could be the relationship between the youth program and the science curriculum at Parker? And how can those two kind of dovetail and support one another? And as you pat one year under your belt, because I really appreciated the ideas of failure and grit and, you know, perseverance. And I'm just wondering how you see youth and the science kind of having a relationship?
I had, Northwestern actually sent a school from here to come over and serve my room because so many schools do it differently. Just, it's not a curriculum in itself, right? And so that school was kind of tempting to do more of what you're talking about and assisting the specific, like, science curriculum in the other grades. Certainly with, I mean, engineering practices throughout all of NJSS.
Right.
And like sustainable energy, I mean, that's in her program and in mine, that's part of sixth grade. So, I mean, there's some overlap, but I, I don't know. So that's a good question.
Okay. Think about it, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd love to hear your thoughts about it.
Okay, sure.
I also love the idea of thinking about how to tap into the community or bring the community into this. I think that is a fantastic idea. And certainly, any ideas that we have, we can, I mean, we're willing to help you in any way, you need us with that. We have long set, I think, on this board, that we have so many untapped resources in our community. And, I mean, we have people whose full-time careers, you know, and still, I mean, so we should definitely find ways to tap into that. Parents and residents constantly stop and ask me, "How can I help? What can we do? What can we do?" You know, whether it's partnering with, you know, Governor's Day, the Homewood Science Center. We have several residents who are scientists who work at the University of Chicago. I mean, so there's all these different wonderful ways. So we should definitely think about that, and we'll share some ideas. But I think that's a fantastic idea. I just think in general, all of our programs like this, that the community does not even know what we're doing. Like, how can we talk about it more and really start to highlight that work and bring people into our space?
And for the record, we hear your concerns of the wall, so.
That's all right. Rest in peace.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you both. Great job.
Thank you.
Next, I'm on the agenda, I E S D Resolutions Committee.
I propose resolutions that we want to take before the new association of school boards. So later on in summer, we'll go on, listen. Later on, once all the resolutions have been approved across the state by the Association of School Boards, we'll bring those back, and then you'll have to determine where you land on all the different positions. If you're going to last year, those hiring teachers and force consolidation, all those other pieces. We'll vote here, you will vote here, and then your delegate will place your official vote at the joint conference in November.
Our delegate's fifteen?
It is fifteen.
Fifteen, right.
Yes.
Seventeen. Oh, my goodness, yes. I still have that video.
The video?
Yeah. Okay, great. Transition planning.
Sure, we just included transition planning for Department of Sporting and Instruction at Parker Junior High and our Human Resources Department. In case there were questions or suggestions, I will open that up to the department. Focusing on the work that we're doing now, and gaps between the incoming people and the expectations, and making sure they have all the information that they need to move forward effectively in their department or in their school slash position. And the other pieces specifically we're looking at Human Resources was really focusing on specific projects as opposed to letting Eric get swallowed up by the minutia of the Jordan Department. So we're working on prioritizing just what that list is and what that represents, the person who can ask.
Questions, comments? So I think, I'm not quite sure if I saw this on the H R R keys, but you definitely talked about the audit.
Yes, there we show up to Homewood Falls, Fallsmore High Schools, so we can hear back from Jordan. But that would probably, if it's okay with you, we'd probably recommend that in September, get through the hiring crunch that will inevitably happen at the end of July, beginning of August, our teachers will come back. And then, once that school year starts, I think it'll be a great time to hit the H R autumn, where we're doing our strategic planning work as well, because that day will form our receipt.
So it would be great, maybe, hopefully, between now and when we meet again, just to have more information on it. Like, I have no idea how long it took them to do the audit, you know, if us starting in the fall, do they need a whole year, because then that does impact the teacher plan? I mean, so just as much information as we can get to just increase our own intelligence would be great.
Yeah, I'll have that way. I'll have that intelligence as well.
And I think, now, any questions or comments about Parker?
Do you know, we remind us who the other additional, so we added a dean and potions, correct?
Correct.
potions?
Yep.
And a dean?
Not, well, we have those positions.
Okay. I don't, I don't see much in a way of that in here, but maybe we'll add that one.
It exists.
Okay.
It does exist. We've just been holding on that as some of those positions solidify over the next week or so.
Okay.
We'll turn that up and bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it will be helpful to see how, what the vision is in terms of how all of these can work together. Some are new, some we've had in the past. I think that would be helpful. And then, we don't have to discuss this now, but I think, given that there is such a major transition, a major transition happening at Parker, I think we need to discuss as a board what the appropriate level of communication and updates will be to the board. We typically, it's, you know, on an absentee basis or, you know, school improvement plans. But I think we, there's just so much going on, and so many moving parts at Parker, I think we will want more updates than we normally would be asking for.
Yeah. We can bring in, please, an initial recommendation and add any intension.
And then we can even think about it in terms of, you know, if, you know, X amount of reports to the board and in specific information that we would be looking for for each of those meetings, so that it's not just sort of this general broad sweep of the monthly, right? It's more specific.
Absolutely. So we'll come up with a timeline and then maybe some suggested topics.
And understanding that it's not micromanaging, it's us having the deepest commitment you could imagine to the success of Parker and to the success of the teachers and the new administration that will be there. And so we will just be paying attention to it in a different kind of way, because it deserves our attention that way.
Any other questions or comments? Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty administrators coaching?
Sure, we were asked to bring back a recommendation for onboarding our group administrators and providing them with assistance and coaching. And so we see in the report, we're recommending, well, just a brief history, last year, we focused primarily on the Text Cultural Act of Jimmy Hosses and Judge Sewell, and provided administrative trainings for us, professional development, also individual coaching for administrators at building level, certainly at the district level also. And that was focused on effective school environments and really focusing on that commitment to our students and our staff for excellence. We have an opportunity now to take the next logical leap. We have literacy curriculum in all schools, we have math curriculum in all schools, we're holding on science. We now have the materials. We have to make sure that we have the instruction behind it. If we don't, we will not be able to keep our commitment to reliability. We've talked a lot at this table about consistency, being able to guarantee consistent experiences from Western to Parker to Heather, Fallsmore Hills, Serena. In order to do that, we have to speak the same language. Our next step is to really firm up our instructional framework and our focus on instructional leadership with our building administrators. Parker has Illinois Power Partner in Silver Strong. I felt, I felt a candy cane story today, and I actually had a meeting with Harvey Silver, just the three of us, to talk about instruction for an hour and a half. I wanted to read it out, and completely never doubt on it. But what it did is, it reaffirmed my belief that if we truly believe that our teachers and the research approvals are the biggest influencers of student achievement, then we have to invest effectively in our principals so that they can observe effective teaching, that they can analyze effective teaching, and they can coach teachers around effective teaching. Working with Silver Strong and their four cornerstones, which we've highlighted in the attached documents, will give us that language. Each building is in a different position. So that would allow the building principals and the building leadership teams to make a decision around, "Oh, you know what? We really need to work on our culture of thinking, reflection, et cetera." Or, "No, you know what? Let's really hit the engagement button, you know, in this particular school." But after three or four years of this work, we're all using the same language, we're all focused in the same areas, and we can get to what they would call a high reliability organization, where we can guarantee the teachers have the toolbox to pull out the strategy to help every kid at every level, and the principals have the ability to support them. All of our principals, next year, will have experience, right? Even our two other principals. And then obviously, the ones we're bringing in have, you know, four years or more of experience. And so the day-to-day support we often provide, we meet weekly with our principals, we do building walkthroughs. In the past, Director of Learning Instruction and I, obviously, repeat them on a weekly basis, talk about what's happening, talk about the work that's being done, focus on the big rocks, the school approval plans, and data work, and all those certain things. That work will still continue, but this work carries forward. We are doing training at Parker on the four cornerstones. That is group one of Parker's plan with State. Group two would be to roll that language out to everyone in the building, all the teachers. Well, let's expand that. Let's expand it to the district, so that everyone has the same opportunity. If we don't spend time focusing on the instruction, we don't get the results we're looking for, we'll look back to moments like this and say, "Okay, what steps did we miss along the way that could have prevented an elementary school from sliding back into underperforming status?" So get the acceleration of work, starting with all of the administrators. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we'll have an open institute-based schedule. Captain Katard will be on, literacy, math, those are completed. We'll be able to focus our efforts on a district-wide implementation of the four cornerstones with the teachers and really the conversations around effective instructional strategies, what it looks like, how to use them effectively, how to put students in the best place to be successful. And I think that is our really, our last, that's our last step. There's only three areas, it's curriculum, it's assessment, and it's instruction, right? You have to have all three of those locked down in order to move forward effectively. We have conformative assessments with both our literacy and our math series, we have our long-term assessments with the math. We have the new series in ready jet and bridges and C P M, so I feel really good about our materials. Right now, we do not have any consistency instructionally between, between buildings, although we may have some within buildings where principals and teacher groups have worked, and they're doing the best for kids, and so they're focused on those spaces. So that would be our recommendation for effective administrator coaching. If we're looking for something different, we can talk about that. But if you're looking to possibly affect student achievement, I believe this is our best path forward. Now, the price, I was talking, there's a little bit of confusion around the price, and we think it'll actually go down. As we were lumping the work into the invoices, the Illinois Power work got pushed in here, and we received money from the state. So that would certainly change this price for the better for us as far as the local funds.
That money from the state, was it a one-time thing? Or do we get it every year until we're up for reassessment or re-assegnment?
Yeah. So initial conversations with the state when we first received the Title III A funds, the first iteration was that maybe that would be a one-time piece. Now, what we've heard from the state is that moving forward, the schools would still be in a sort of holding pattern with the designation, and you would continue to get your funding for implementing your plan for three years. So again, that was a change, so we don't know if it will change again, but that's where we stand right now.
And there's, I don't remember the dollar amount of the award, but it's enough to cover this and any other support?
We would have to access some of the grant funds.
Okay. So is Title I?
We would have to, we would have to double-check titles. I don't think Title I.
No, Title II.
Title II.
Title II.
Which you call. Yeah, I will tell you, Harvey certainly knew about me. But I meant in two thousand and eight.
Pretty hard for him.
Well, you're in the same area. But truly, and that particular training was on the strategic teacher, it was at National ASCD Conference. And I will tell you, it set my instructional leadership on a different trajectory than those. So the professional development is incredibly high-class, it is focused on the absolute best practices, and you can take what you learn through this process and implement it immediately. And when you think about it, it gets clear, it's two of the mental leadership reasons.
Questions or comments?
Is this the same, correct me, please, is the same mentoring that you're talking about for our principals, or is this completely separate? You know, before we took, oh, there was talk, having mentorship for our principals, is the same thing?
Well, I think that's part of this conversation. When we talk about mentoring, what's, what are we looking? And so there's a mentoring of, here's how you, here's the best way, best practice to reach out to your parents, right? Mentoring as far as, here's how you put your building schedule together. It's mentoring as far as, okay, how would you like to interact with the Fallsmore Education Association this year? And then there's coaching around, how are you going to make sure that your teachers have everything that they need to deliver the strategy? to deliver the strategy? Or let's walk through the classrooms, spend five minutes, and then let's go back to your office and talk about how you're going to take this particular grade level to the next instructional level. And I think those, they're two different practices. This would be the lab. This would be focused on, I'm going to help you become the best instructional leader you can be so that you can go provide effective coaching to your, to your teachers. The mentoring is typically provided by myself, Annabelle. Current role provides that mentoring specifically slash coaching as well.
So we're still doing a mentorship?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Now, if we had, if we had a new principal, I think this is good. Because that person would need someone else to talk to you about, okay, here's how I think organizing, you know, staff needs will be or student discipline, parent disagreement, you name it. And I think there's that. Since we have veteran or veteran administrators, they're past that. We'll help them through, here's how, here's what I expect in District 161. Here's how we do things around the HR practices, et cetera. But we need to help them and take what they, their strengths from their previous lives and their current schema and help them step in.
Any other questions or comments?
So I'd say that what Dan's goal is, is a professional development program. But clearly, what we need, and I thought we conveyed several, and I haven't yet spoken to the board, is to have, these principals have specific insights into our school district from experienced leaders in District 161. I definitely believe that the coaching is entirely different than mentoring. The coaching is structured, it's task-driven, and informative. Yes, it's about setting goals and measuring performance. They shouldn't do very much workplace-related. But partnering and inspiring sort of maximum potential in it, that's what you're trying to do with coaching. Very short-term and a set by coach, agenda's set. What we talked about is actually having an experienced advisor, someone to provide, over informal workplace development, which is relationship-based, and is needed in mentoring. A mentor is a more experienced individual that's willing to share knowledge with someone who's less experienced in a relationship to developing mutual trust. In my, in mentorship, it's a partnership that emphasizes mutual learn, monitoring that is capable of building something successful. To help, you know, learners actually have more long-term commitment with a mentor and where the gym is actually set by a motif. So to many points, that particular reference was also brought up in April by a parent representing individuals. It was twice specific. That what we talked about was very important in our program. And I thought that doesn't sound like we would have discussed at length. So when it comes to, I guess, examples of that, I go back to, was one of my partner, Lewis Crawford, where she's currently looking at bringing individuals in-house where she feels like she's going to have to go outside. And that began by sort of mentioning. So, you know, I really just don't get why we are just having a mentoring program and we also have a development program.
And could you, could you flush out the example of Parker?
So I think that when it comes to mentoring, again, it's something where you're trying to develop a relationship and you're not trying to just speak to specifics of what they're doing. So in the Parker situation, I think we could have done very easily gone outside and brought in individuals. But then, with it brought someone in, already had existing knowledge of that's what School District 161. And I think that's very valuable. That's something that's going to go a long way in our district.
So you want, you want principals to be able to speak with someone who has experience in District 161?
I want principals to receive information, build relationships, and to establish a rapport with someone who is more experienced than they are and extremely familiar with School District 161. I don't think, you're talking about how old they are, School District 161.
Is your perspective that you can't, between myself and Ken, handle that expectation?
I'm saying this so far, the results have shown by the fact that we actually have parents come forward to say that this is something that they think will actually be beneficial, that is something I think we actually would have been acting on.
So help me understand, because I was a little confused. It sounds like Dana, you spoke to the type of mentoring that you do with new principals back in August. I recall, or maybe September, I recall, you were talking about, you know, you walk through, you're one-on-ones, the types of things. This is what I remember. You shared the different types of things that you do with principals kind of on a weekly, a monthly basis. Now, it wasn't adopted, it was not an adopted formal mentoring program, but I felt like you spoke to that. You maybe articulated what you do do as a mentor to principals.
Yeah, that was a much better beginning of the year than our certainly end of the year. But we do, we can talk about what's, what's expected. We, this year, Annabelle took one principal and I took four others. And we would need and talk about what's happening in a week, what's expected, what's expected in the context of the school approval plan. Here's how it fits in the context of what the board is expecting out of student achievement or culture and climate changes in that nature. It would go from the theoretical to what does work-life integration look for you as a human being and both as a spouse or a parent or a principal or whatever your position is, to, okay, here are the landmines around that issue in Flossmar or in Chicago Heights or Homewood, et cetera, et cetera. And what that means. And let's talk about how you navigate that particular concept. So, you know, it was certainly more on the nuts on both sides as opposed to the theoretical. And Jimmy Casas and Jeff Sewell handled the theoretical with the Culturize, doing walkthroughs with the Vox Group, which is kind of a voice recorder, group communicator that you can use. And, you know, individual work with the building principals to say, okay, here's where you work, where you want to be. Let's talk about what that plan looks like. Okay, we're going to be back in three months. We'll check it then. Let's communicate once we go on. And this work, more closely followed that kind of process. Again, if it's a matter of connecting the people with where the bodies are buried in the school district, to use a, you know, a frank term, we can, we can help with that. But if it's something else, I need that. Apparently, I'm not a clarity, David, on what we're looking for. If it's, if it's to tell the principals how to do their jobs in District 161, then we can do that.
Yeah. So can I ask your question? Sure. It was a mention of the program. That was mandatory by Sarah Illinois. That brought to a warning that it's a four program existed here in the district before. Quite in detail. Maybe I can send you an email to ask you to look at that.
Right. Actually, and you'll get an answer by, you'll get an answer by the way, right?
Sure.
Yes.
That program.
So you're looking, you're looking for a program for new principals for us to use with all of our current principals, correct?
All right. Okay. I'll say it again. I just, I want us to have a program that exists before.
Can someone just, I don't know what that program is.
Yeah, that's why I asked for it and I asked those.
So I just, so absent of that knowledge, I can't add anything, you know, credible to that part of the discussion. I mean, so, so, you know, whatever, and how long ago was this program?
So we would have to check.
Last seven years.
Not the last seven years, in Illinois too.
And does it still exist? Like, is, so that may.
What's the research on it or, you know, might the effectiveness or how is it perceived?
The research that I saw on it as recently as this week was that it was very successful, extremely successful.
How do we, can we see, can we see this?
Again, I did my own personal research on it. I knew about its existence and some of the board received, we never asked y'all about its existence.
Some of these programs?
Yes, sir. So, again, I'm happy to go ahead and be presented or sit in front of the boards and famous interviews and happy.
So when I received the initial email, I asked for at least until this Friday to get that information together. At the time that we received it, we're going to get the board book out on time and all the other requests that you had that last week. We want to make sure that we prioritize the work so the board can take it first. So this Friday by 4:30, we'll have whatever we can gather. So we don't, we don't know what the district has happened. I would, I would ask the board to just consider that program in the context of a principal with 15 years of experience versus, you know, a principal who's coming out of the classroom and just how their needs vary. And as we understand that resources are finite, time and money hasn't removed principals from their buildings, trainings, coaching, et cetera, are we value-added? And if we're not, then probably should do those things, which our teams are trying. Definitely, or we could probably speak with Haley and Ashley, and ask them what do you think they would need to grow as professionals moving forward.
What's called, what exactly, how is this?
It's actually called a principal mentoring program.
So I think with me, go ahead, Dana.
Sure, Dan. Right. Sorry, it's a little late, so I never know if I'm interrupting correctly. The only statute I define is on a new principal mentoring program. It's 15500CS5/2-3453A, and it is appropriate that you just would descend subject to manual appropriation by the General Assembly. So right there, we don't understand all of that, none of that. But maybe one, we, it lists the second, they refer to, this is a new principal mentoring program for principals who are in their first or second year and it's supposed to be run by an executive. If there is some statute out there that says that a school district should have a specific mentoring program, I think I'm a little limited to that, but I'm sure I'm looking for it. And I might also use on, you know, I didn't, first of all, when this address came to speak a couple weeks ago, I didn't understand her, she was speaking on behalf of a group of people. I heard her speaking on behalf of herself, so I didn't identify what group of people she was speaking on behalf of. But any events, you know, I, I'm unclear on how, with Dave and I, is it the same or different like our parents and other agents are already doing.
For me personally, as, next year will be my fourth year as administrator in this district, but this is my first year flying solo. The coaching from Dr. Smith is the most beneficial thing for me weekly. I mean, it's one-on-one. We can personally talk about like needs of our students in the school and how it fits in the vision of the district. So that's something that's important to me to continue. That was really helpful. And then, I mean, Jimmy and Jeff were also helpful because they brought in a fresh perspective, like from the outside too. So I appreciated that coaching and they kind of like would give advice on things without knowing any background to it. Just what's been effective for them as principals because they combined kind of a lot of years too. So if Silver Strong is similar to that, I could definitely see the benefit in that. So I think that with the coaching from Dr. Smith, to me, would grow the teachers and myself the most, which would have the most impact on the students.
So just, so I teach instructional coaching and mentoring classes, I can afford it, right? So to your point, coaching and mentoring are two very different things, for sure. But typically, what we found most recently, if you look at the research of Jim Knight and Janet Hice, you'll find that mentoring programs are informal and they're based on relationships. So you don't buy a package that's called a mentoring program, but you establish it based on the needs of the person you're mentoring and, and it's more about understanding and establishing norms of the culture and climate of the district, the school, the classroom, and it evolves. So there's, there's not a set of hard, fast rules, this is what it needs to mentor. So what mentoring for Haley would look different for mentoring for Annabelle or any would look different. And it would need to be based on, hey, I'm really struggling to understand how to handle community concerns or how to handle parent concerns. So for me, that's why I started by saying I'm a little confused because that is what you describe that you do with our teachers. So coaching is a whole different set of skills and it is very task-oriented and it's based on content or strategies or technology. It's based on a discipline. But the mentoring that in my mind that is most effective is personalized and it's really specific to this particular group, to this one-on-one experience that you're having. If you're doing that, I'm personally satisfied. It's based on what research would suggest mentoring should look like. If there's something more that was done in the past that worked and then we can find evidence to say this is something that is value-added, then yeah, I'm interested in hearing about it. But if it's, what you've described satisfies me for the role that mentoring plays. There could be other things that could be, and other things that principals would have to say to us. I specifically need this. And if it falls out of your wheelhouse, then let's get that.
Dr. Briggs, that's similar to what the coaching is with Dr. Smith. We'll walk around the building, the classrooms, and when we leave a classroom, he'll say, like, what did you see? What's your next conversation with that teacher going to be? What strategies are you going to use? And so then we have the discussion and it's, yeah, more coaching, kind of, but yeah.
So that would satisfy me. The long-term effects, if we're looking for long-term effects with principals, like if we're looking for them to stay or for them to be happy, that's a different conversation. That's something else that we could get differently. For mentoring, what we're talking about here, I feel like you satisfy mentoring. If there's something else that's not in your system, you're more aware of that. So I think, so whatever additional information you have, I think that would be very helpful. I think that we should also not assume that mentoring has not already been taking place. Right. So we can't assume that the exit of, or the transition to new administrators, given each case is so unique and so we can't, we can't say that it's a lack of mentoring that resulted in the transition. I do completely believe in mentoring programs as well as professional development in being able to clearly articulate your vision for both of those. I think it would be helpful, especially in the absence of Annabelle. You know, I mean, so you can't, in absence of Annabelle, in the absence of, and us taking on the planning of the strategic plan and all the other things that we have going on, we want to make sure that you have the greatest opportunity to meet all of your goals that you are working on now. That being the case, you know, additional assistance is needed for mentoring to take, you know, some of the space that Annabelle will be leaving, you know, we can totally think about, you know, is this a role like that frame that could potentially play and provide additional assistance? I agree. I think the mentoring piece is very personal. It's very, very personal. And I think the professional development piece is crucial. I mean, we want our administrators to be the absolute best that they can be. And without that professional development piece and us committing to growing our administrators that way, I mean, we can write off mentoring that a lot, but if we're not helping grow professionally, then it doesn't. I mean, so I think.
I mean, so I think being able to clearly articulate your vision for the mentoring piece, whether or not you feel like there's a gap and additional assistance could be used, yourselves, how, what would that look like? Whether it's Pat or whether, um, the group that you're proposing here can play some of that role, I don't know. Um, but I think distinguishing between the two would be very helpful. Um, I think getting whatever documents existed on the old program would be helpful, but I will say, I think we should create, I think you should create a program, or we should support a program that we feel works best for the 160 program.
And, and the one thing I'll say is, is, um, and it's already been kind of mentioned many times, I'm not saying it's either a good, I'm not saying it's an end. Um, and that's why I'm kind of here agreeing on. But the piece that, that again, I, I don't want us to lose the opportunity to see, because I have to bring it back. Lose the opportunity to have something as longstanding that helps us to not only build great administrators, um, but also helps them go ahead and, and, you know, that this is something that I can actually go ahead, lay down roots with us. They become much more involved, that personal level. So, that's kind of what I'm saying, I think if there, um, an outcome that we want to have for our children, strategic as a whole, and it also helps because then there's another segment that's going to help our superintendent perform his job, for watching the workouts.
So, I also think a lot of this that will come out in the strategic planning process, right? I think, um, our commitment and our vision for, we always talk about growing our pitch and strengthening our pitch. And I think the transitions that are happening, um, at Parker is a great testament to that. I mean, so I think a lot of that will start to come out as we start to work with the strategic plan in terms of, um, what's important to us in terms of mentoring and strengthening our administrators. I mean, obviously, we want our administrators to be here for a very, very long time. And so, from a strategic planning perspective, are we providing the tools that we need for them to be successful and to keep them here? And I think those are things that we come up very easily in strategic planning discussions when we start thinking about a long-term strategy.
So, I just have a question, so prepare. The assumption is the transition is because of lack of mentorship. This is, I'm just trying to figure out how are those two things wedding? Am I understanding that? Because when you said that they want to stay, you know, this and the other.
That's actually more a hope, more, um, outcome. I'm hoping that, that having something in place, structured, not, not programmatically, as I mentioned, but just in a system of existence, um, again, will, will allow our administrative principals to just have another tool, another asset that will allow them to not only grow, but then hopefully find, you know, um, I'm receiving my coaching and I have a strong relationship and this is just a, a great kumbaya moment and they want to stay longer. I might be wrong, but I'm just saying that I think it's a good start.
Well, I think, um, so we definitely have a mentoring program. It's whether you're calling it a program or not, it's what you do, it's in your goals and it's certainly an expectation that both we have as well as your administrators. Um, so it's already, so it's already occurring. So, I think, um, just articulating that better, I think will help.
Absolutely. One, so one changeable example, we talked about goals and business standards, enough as the principals identify the specific elements of business standards that they're going to focus on, we talk about those a lot, right? And so, that mentoring relationship is focused on their, on the program. So, we can absolutely articulate that. I mean, if we're throwing stock on the table, we have one administrator in the area who would know about District 161. So, if there's a specific person that we're supposed to talk to, I mean, we can point in that direction. Otherwise, I wouldn't know of one person outside of the district who's in the area who would know about District 161. So, if it's, if you're saying, go find Patrick, you're going to never talk to the principal, I think.
I think that's what I've heard David say.
I know, but that's, but that's not being said, well, but I think that it's not being said. So, I, I just need to get to a point of clarity around, what are we asking for? Are we asking for mentoring or are we asking for a retired principal to speak with our colleagues?
I heard you say, you know, do you want someone to tell you where the baby is, period? And, you know, like that, like is that, like?
If, if, if Pat is that person, then we should talk to Pat. You know, Pat is that person. You know, so, so what, what I would say is, is, um, again, I'm not trying to identify a person, okay? If that person happens off of fit, what it is to discuss them, then great.
So, I want to be careful with, and I'm feeling a little misaligned here. So, if our goal is to retain happy, successful principals, then we would first have to say the reason why our principals left and were not happy and successful was because we didn't have a successful mentoring program. If the data doesn't show that, then the most amazing Patrick Raymond mentoring program will not address that.
Yeah, I don't think we should make that statement.
So, 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 so I, I want to, I want to throw, I have that kind of language around, you know, um, if we want them to stay, we want them to be happy, we want, I don't, I don't feel like it belongs in this conversation. Does mentoring, yes, but I, there's, there's no correlation there. We don't have any data to suggest that if we had had a mentoring program that we had seven years ago, Patrick Raymond was sitting with each principal, then we would be in a different place. And I, and I want to be that quick, because you, you will present something that is, that doesn't match what we need. If you want, if we want Patrick Raymond, it has to be for a totally different.
And we just, I agree, so we can't make a broad sweeping statements about why people choose to stay or go, right? I mean, and, and I think from, at this point, we should only be forward thinking anyway, um, and not be concerned why people have decided to move on. Um, and so I think maybe a clear distinction between those two things will be helpful, whether it ends up being, whether whoever it is, right? So, it's, it's not about, I also don't want us to fit a person into a specific role, right? I want, I want you to first identify whether or not there is a need or a gap that needs to be filled. Um, I don't think that it has to be, I mean, we know who all the retired 161 folks are in the, we know, we know where I'm at. We, we, we know Florida, I mean, we know where they are, we know where they all are.
We need a filter.
Right, I mean, so I don't think that should be the goal. I think the goal should be first, can we clearly articulate, because you do have your mentoring. You have, mentoring is a huge part of your responsibility and so articulating it means you can, when you have a goal. And if there's a gap, given the move of Annabelle over to Parker, you can identify that gap and then you can think about it.
Can I just repeat this back, just to make sure that it did give them more than they were looking for for this program? So, any information that we can find around, we'll be happy to ask. Any additional information from the Illinois School Board, um, about those expectations or requirements? And then just any other, just local data that we can find around.
And can I just, and maybe a copy of the letter that, you know, that was handed out to board?
I don't have that, I didn't do that, man. John, if you want to share.
Got it.
Um, just for clarity, since I'm here today, um, I think that the purpose that I hopefully was trying to convey in getting, um, some type of mentorship or coaching program for the leadership is that, um, as we as professionals, you know, rush daily, the coaching that Dr. Smith is giving, I'm sure is fantastic. Um, sometimes though, in our work-life balance, sometimes we may struggle with something and we don't know, you know, don't want our supervisor to look at us and say, well, why didn't you go answer that question? So, perhaps the coaching aspect that you, you mentioned, the five levels of coaching may cover that. I just know that as a young district, being the board, being, um, the leadership, the administration, there should be something structured in place so that the teachers, the administrators, the district is successful overall. And as that is fleshed out and built, then, you know, we can see how it goes or, you know, have some confidence in what has been done in the past, what our future holds. I just wanted to see something formal, a formal process that would, we could check some boxes to the successes and what we're doing so we can, you know, go back and say, okay, this didn't work, this worked or what have you. Is it this person or that person? That is not my call to make, you know, I'm not, it's not the two R and M to say who is designated to serve in those roles. But hopefully, you know, we can start the conversation, which obviously we have, you all have started looking at companies and strategic ways to make that happen. So, hopefully that clarifies, you know, my, my ask of what I was hopefully, you know, looking for from the board and making that happen for our administration.
Now, I will tell you, um, after two years, two years now, we did some work around tax court here, I have to go back and forward. We've really taken that to heart. I will tell you that as we start to analyze our data over the next month, you will see that our commitment to streamline work that connects all the different areas of our district is paying. And it is paying dividends where, where it happens, in our client data and in our, and so as we continue to push on developing the best practitioners that we can, supporting the best teachers that we can, we are going to continue to see those results. And to John's point, we have to make sure that we create environments where people can be vulnerable. And so, one of the things I do want to look at is, do we create that now? Because, you know, data, I've talked about this, there's a different dynamic if I'm sitting in front of you and you're going to say, Dad, you're doing this, right? That's a different conversation. Um, and I think we have a lot of those still, uh, but we want to make sure that, that there is, that there are opportunities for people to be vulnerable and to get feedback and input from others, so they can tend to their, so we'll, we'll bring this back to the future.
And quite honestly, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we needed someone to head up HR. I mean, it, it really is, I mean, because we, um, recognize that the, the mentoring piece and growing our staff from within, um, so that we do have transition, you know, one staff to another building versus one staff outside of the district. Um, and we needed to take some of that responsibility off of the superintendents to do. I mean, so perhaps even looking for something that Eric can do. But that was, that was one of the reasons why we needed someone to really start paying very close attention to all things human resources, um, and mentoring is part of it.
So, feedback for this is, I, I, this is great. I'm thrilled that you're bringing this leadership, um, this, you know, understanding by the science. This is great. This is everything that I've been looking for, um, in terms of supporting administrators to support teachers.
Yeah, and realistically, 2019, 20, spoke with administrators, some teacher leaders. 2021, we roll out to the teachers and really that's, that takes us probably two, two more. I mean, it seems like a really long way away. And every confidence that between the alignment, work that we're doing on curriculum side, the work that we're doing on, you know, solidifying our structural practices, and then continuing to analyze data with a strong PLC process, our students, we will have example of these tools. That's my goal in the 2024 year. About when? 2024?
April?
No. If you may, Bridget, it's like we promised, I promised you sooner. But, uh, we have kids coming in all shapes and sizes and, and levels and our goal is at least one year's growth for every kid accelerated for those who are behind. And, uh, we want to set lofty targets that are, that are rigorous, but being realistic, no.
Is there any more discussion on this?
Me, well, move to more topics, is there anything to discuss?
So, I have a question, I kind of need to go before the committees. So, can we just keep our eye on this, you know, this 3053, the same way that, you know?
So, it's okay.
I guess, just so that we can say the rights of what it is.
Yeah, so the question was, can we keep an eye on House Bill 3053, which is about force consolidation. It's on hold currently, but may get a little bit of like, a lot of what this looks for filed against, so, uh, we're in for. Uh, there was, uh, there was a property tax freeze bill that got put on hold today. That is kind of sneaking out there, sneaking around other new shelves. So, if that's on hold, if anything happens with that, we'll know immediately because that one's a problem tax on our budget process.
So, that's, that's, well, that's a, that's a viable war, but whoever is on the financing? If they did, you lost.
That would be a nation.
If that falls that group, then however, you know, I don't want to hold up everybody's time, but, um, otherwise.
Excellent.
Add to your mind, I do a piece of education possible 161.
And of course, this is, these are the things we will absolutely hit. If there are pieces that we come across throughout here, you can always make recommendations and changes. This just helps us go through, I mean, we're, we're putting the board in a position to have information long before you need to make a decision on it.
Yeah.
And we're not caught by surprise by any danger issues unless it's intentional. It's pretty good we're still on it.
Brenda, um, is there anything specific in respect to the victim?
Well, a couple of things. Yes, so I, I want to know how our new policy, how it's looking out. Um, the numbers associated with acceleration and early entrance and how, like, keep an eye on those kids. Um, I'd like to look at our twice exceptional kids. Um, I, I get worried about them, especially when they get to Parker. Like, we have some things in place, take five. But I think when we look at what, so Illinois is unique and then most states give you that clause under special. So, those kids that are ID, they're going to fall through the cracks, but I suspect that, um, the new policy has helped to identify a greater population of kids in here. But, um, I think, I want to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to support those kids. And if additional funding or programming or support for those, for those teachers is necessary, then I want to make sure that I'm doing what I need to do.
Additionally, um, I wanted to have an update of something sort on, uh, residency and how our investigators done for us far.
Um, I know we're in the middle of registration right now.
That's on our, that's on our radar. People wait for a couple of final reports. We have identified frankly, just briefly a number of students who we have flagged and we will not let register. There are few that have some more information and there are few that said, the district policy. So, we'll bring that back to the board. When, when will that occur? Having as early as the 24th or as late as the 25th? I think it'll be about the 24th, we should be over here, recording.
I'd like to say thanks, Scott, but I know you do not. Big Dana is from Alaska.
I can reach the room, but they're upset there.
I'm wearing a snuggie and a sweetie's and this great thing. Oh, okay. The next item are board committees.
Yes, sure.
Um, so, um, as all of you know, we created two new committees, is it two years ago? Well, the Equity Committee was created last year, right there. Um, and then the Community Engagement Committee was created two years ago. Um, and so I think those have been working well. And so, um, there are more committees, I think, that are warranted this year for a variety of reasons. And so, I think I've had, um, at different lengths, conversations with all of you, um, around, you know, this idea of creating other committees. And so, I think where we are landing, um, we will keep the Community Engagement Committee, we will keep the Equity and Inclusion Committee, it's all on your board, okay? We will add a strategic plan. We will add a Strategic Planning Committee, oh, sorry, the Finance Committee, we created that two years ago too, right? Um, so we're really just adding the Strategic Planning Committee and the Learning and Instruction Committee. The District Leadership Team is not a board-created committee, so it almost doesn't fit for me. Um, because we didn't, we didn't create it and we just started, um, not that long ago having a board member participate in those. So that kind of sort of sits by itself. Um, so I know that, um, one of the things that we've also talked about was making sure people have the opportunity to play, have leadership roles on the board. And in the past, I have taken volunteers and then I get crickets. Um, but this year I have talked to, uh, well, some people have actually said I'd love to be, um, this committee or lead this committee, but this year I have taken the liberty of, um, coming up with my own list that I hope everyone's support. Yes, I strongly suggest. Um, and so for each of the committees, let's see, so Strategic Planning Committee, Steve will take the lead on that. In part because, um, Steve and I actually are the only two that have looked off through that whole process now a couple times. Um, so Steve will take the lead on that. Um, I'll be a backup, I'll probably sit in on some of those meetings as well. Um, District Leadership Team, I think Carolyn will just keep you as the lead. I think your background, um, probably adds a lot to those discussions. Um, Finance Committee, Nisha, I know you love numbers. Um, and I thought, David, I think you have shown interest as well in, um, budgets and things like that. So I think, um, being on that committee would make you look great. Uh, Christina, I was hoping you would lead the Community Engagement Committee. Um, and Steve participates and can still continue to be the backup. Cam will lead the Learning and Instruction Committee with Carolyn also participating. And then David, I was hoping that you would, um, play a leadership role in the Equity and Inclusion Committee, and I will also still participate. I think those two board members per committee.
Well, um, yes, I'm, I'm okay with everything you just said. The one thing that's important to note, um, the District Leadership Team, um, I've actually been working in one capacity, parent of the District Leadership Team. And, um, I think it's actually a very important team. One of the things I actually presented to the team itself is that I didn't know the history about how I got combined and how I came out. Um, but as we continue down, I think we have to discuss that, Rob, just want to play a very large role, strategic plan, and so want to play a very large role, kind of take our vision of the district. Um, so I was hoping that I can also employ and remain on the team, Carolyn, you've done a great job, um, so that's why I asked.
So I think this is probably a side conversation, I mean, I think you should think about the structure of the District Leadership Team, because, because it's not a board-initiated, um, and we just sort of happen to have center rep. What I don't want to do is overwhelm that committee with two board members. So I think a discussion probably needs to be had whether or not, um, if, if there's a conflict, if you are a stay on as a parent, like, I don't, I don't know, um, because I don't know all that goes on at those meetings. So I think it's worth a conversation about it.
Yeah, because if, if, if we ourselves just have a specific task, and once we move the task, then it's, it's all the way.
Okay, so, um, we can talk maybe in the next meeting, um, a little bit more about the committees. Um, I think as the lead on these committees, you all decide when these meetings should happen in partnership with Dr. Smith.
Sure.
Um, but I know, Nisha, I think like you and John, just in France, I think, France?
I just, we just did whatever.
Okay, so, so France, you could relate to me, that is, the Finance Committee is the leading horizon there. So we will, so we'll start to talk through what these committees look like and, you know, the Learning and Instruction Committee, for example, is new, so who should be part of that? What should, what's the goal of that committee? Um, I think the Community Engagement Committee, Christina, I think one of your amazing tasks will be is to, um, how to increase participation in the Community Engagement Committee. I don't think, you know, we, we started out kind of strong, but some amazing things have come out.
I think my P T O background.
I think it will be fantastic, but a lot of the great ideas that we have done around Community Engagement have been sort of born or is adopted by that committee. So the back to school events, the end of the school year event, right? The thing, the website, so all of that. I mean, so it is an incredibly important committee. I don't think that the community really gets all that's going on in it, so.
I think they'll get it.
I mean, but, um, but I do think that for the new committees, the strategic plan and the learning and instruction, we need to talk about what those will look like.
Sure.
And then how will we bring the information from the strategic planning committee back to this board and, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, but you did bring up a point that I completely forgot, Nisha, is that at one point, I, I think I was playing around with the idea of a legislative committee. Um, and still, I'm not necessarily convinced that we need to have one. I think that, um, for this bill in particular, it makes sense for it to be sort of sitting in the Finance Committee and someone, you know, maybe keeping, you know, keeping your eye on it. Um, so we should just think going forward, like, are there specific legislative issues that pertain to a specific committee that maybe should sit there and someone sort of bases it and tell?
So how do you kind of see the legislative committee? Will, will they kind of run the role and will they just watch?
Yeah, you know, so in the past, we have not had a committee, although we have had board members who wanted a committee, um, but one in particular sort of took on the personal charge of standing on top of bills that were sitting in Springfield or that were bubbling up that could impact our district in either way, right? Whether it was something that had to deal with budgets or, um, you know, when S B one hundred came out, I mean, anything that pertains to the school district, yeah, just sort of, while, I'm sure there are listservs and things like that that she probably subscribes to, I think she also is taking upon herself to just meet with legislators, to just give updates, form of a member.
Oh.
But that's also something that we can just do on our own. I think we have close relationships with our local legislators and if there's something that we wanted to have them come in and talk about, we can do that very easily. So, so that's why I haven't put, pinned to paper and said, yes, I think we should create a legislative committee yet. Um, I think for now, um, issues that bubble up usually are raised by Dr. Smith, and then we can figure out if it should sit in one of the committees for us to pay closer attention to. We can also do that when, um, we are talking about resolutions, for example, you know, if, if they pertain to something that hits directly home in one of the committees, then maybe, you know, I can, we can just ask you guys to take a closer look at this particular resolution because this, we, because a lot of times I think we know, and we don't really know what the resolution is.
So, so one of the things that happens when we go to a conference, generally, you know, everybody picks at their wheelhouse, and so this past couple of times, I've always gotten to the legislative, and so you learn a lot of things that you don't, you wouldn't necessarily be aware of. And so that's also a gap to a little when people, you know, just randomly, and you just step into, you're like, huh, it seems, and like the census is coming, and there's a lot of issues with that.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't come for, um, six months ago, but.
Oh, no.
But just those type of things that you just.
Until it happens, now we are fine.
This is a good time for a quick plug. Thursday is the day to let Cortina, if you're still attending the state conference, if you remember. All right, so just get that information turned in, we'll get Richard. Uh, Retrician opens up on Monday at eight A M. So we are, we'll be right on.
Cool, now, the last one I actually, the legislative part, um, is, right now, if there wasn't where this has been made a change down the street. And the governor and the legislators are really looking very closely at education, at education funding. Um, and so he's starting to see a lot, and the legislature in our area, what they do is toys, the Tony and the Lucas, they're all really very active, but I don't know how much that we're actually getting access to because they're right around the border anyway. So I would talk about trying to.
Yeah, so we do have access to all of them, and, um, Will has been here on more than one occasion. Um, I think he's been, was there more S B one hundred than, than we had even considered having more of a town hall? Yeah, 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 including the legislators. Right, I mean, so we have that ability. We, we definitely have those relationships and, you know, if there is something, um, that we feel is, is worse, sort of like, bringing the community in, having a larger discussion, or, I mean, Will has come and just provided more clarity on specific issues. I mean, so, yes, so they are definitely a tapped resource.
Would that fall under the Community Engagement Committee?
Perhaps.
Um, but certainly anything, um, that we want to do that to bring the community in to have broader discussions concerning the quality of the community. Okay, um, Courtney, did you get all of those committees in the meeting? Next item, Portrait of a Graduate.
Sure, so as David mentioned, kind of project-based by the District Leadership Team, we have been focusing on our Portrait of a Graduate in District one sixty-one. We've talked about this for a few months, it really boils down to what is our commitment to every child in this school district? What skills we want them to leave eighth grade with after they've been with us, primarily it's for that kid who's been here from kindergarten on through, but eventually we have to have a conversation about, okay, what about the child that does start at sixth grade? What does that mean for them and their experience? So we have identified four main areas. We, we would like our children, in their best case scenario, is they walk out of Parkland Junior High School to be resilient learner, a skilled communicator collaborator, a connected global citizen, and a creative and critical thinker. This is certainly not an exhaustive list of things that we want for our kids. It's implied that they have to learn content, it's implied that they have to know the standards, they have to master content, I mean, they have to know things. I mean, I could say that crude, but they're, they have to know formulas and they have to know work. But more importantly though, they're going to have to be able to, at the end of it, put it all together and be a effective student. Cory, if you put the second document draft. So our, so our District Leadership Team has been working, well, just a little bit of this, just a tick. Again, this is in draft form. So we're, we're starting to identify the different competencies that go in each of the boxes. We're still a little bit loose on creative and critical thinker, we can see there's some subbullets there. But again, this is not an exhaustive list, but, you know, when you have that resilient learner, it really deals with not giving up. Tim, Gerrut mentioned grit, that's what it comes down to, is the ability to, you know, fight through and, you know, I, I saw a meme the other day, he's, you know, supposed to be a college kid, you know, referencing, you know, well, hey, nothing's coming easy to me anymore, I think it's going to throw in the towel. Well, that's what we're finding, and we do have kids that breeze all the way through, and then all of a sudden, you know, the rope is tough and they struggle. So making sure that there's an appropriate level of struggle early on so that it can work through that. Obviously, skilled communication and collaboration are huge pieces and, and an overarching umbrella here, because these are all twenty-first century learning skills. These are the skills that have been identified, um, through research as the skills that will take our schools to the next level. You know, when you think about communication and collaboration, there's different modalities, there's, um, different ways, there's different groups, there's different settings, there's, you know, coast switching, you know, we even have conflict resolution. So again, this conversation is questions about content, questions about any of the different verbs, et cetera. We've set this out to our District Leadership Team members, we're sharing it with their teachers, I mean, we're talking about how far can we spread, share this in the community to get input so that once we adopt it, this is a community focus. It's really important that we do that. Next, we've gone to a connected global citizen. We do have girl books. Our kids can speak with professors from Berkeley if they want to talk about a particular topic or connect with a student in South America. Again, as our, as our reading buddy or talk about views of the day, whatever it is, we do have the ability for our students to reach far outside the boundaries of home or foster or hazel rush, gut hikes in the fields. We have to take advantage of that, because as they're finding different opportunities, many of them haven't been created yet, but those ones that have been created, um, will probably be outside of South Coast. So we want to churn out kids who are ready to experience the world as it is, but also certainly be good civic members. And then finally, this one, there's a lot of conversation in the team about being a creative and a critical thinker. That crea- creative, creativity, pick your poison on that one. It does deal with the arts, it does deal with, uh, beauty, it does deal with defining challenges in a number of different ways. It also deals with, I have to get from point A to point B, I can figure out four different ways to do that. I also have the background to, to pick the best one based on my current situation. So, you know, putting students in places where they're addressing cave news, where they are reflecting on their own actions and thoughts and behaviors in order to have deeper meaning of not only themselves, but the different actions that they're going to take. So like I said, this really kind of comes down to the narrative at the top, you know, there's that line, these are our hopes and aspirations. This truly is the moonshot. This is, this is not the, kids have to be able to do math, kids should know the common core, that would put anyone to sleep. This is the motivational piece behind the work that we're doing. The pathway, which is what we're following, is recommended by the current research that's out there, not only strategic planning, but also Portrait of a Graduate. As we've talked to different, uh, school districts around the state, we went up to Buffalo Grove, uh, which does mean this is a nice school to have this conversation. They wish that they would have done their Portrait of a Graduate first and then their strategic plan second. I think they were pretty close, but once we figure this out, once we figure out our commitment to every child, then setting the next five years of actions becomes a lot clearer. And the information along with the board report, I do have to keep, uh, provide a couple of examples. Uh, Buffalo Grove was one, and then a Lucas Shelby, those schools was, you know, and I just thought those did a good job of presenting a graphic depiction of what this could be. That's why it's important to probably whittle down skilled communicator, caterer, collaborator by one, and then creative and critical thinker by at least one or two main roles. Once we agree on all the language and the board says, yes, thumbs up, we're willing to make that commitment to the kids in District one sixty-one, we'll work with either Katie Sullivan or another graphic designer on, on what our graphic could be, and then we'll try to do what we can to personalize that, probably by building and using recognizable pieces and, and make sure that this is real.
I'm not going to call it pod, are we?
No, I really don't like that, I don't agree with any of that. Well, at, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we, we have talked about different, you know, patterns, so we're, we're not done yet, but I.
The problem is that we have no vowels in our headers, so that became impossible.
Right now, it's just like risk. That doesn't inspire confidence.
Um, I, I'm sorry.
No, please, please.
I am curious to know how you decided on resilient learner.
It's a question. Okay, I'll give you a question. You have to go on first.
Um, so I think this had a lot to do with social emotional learning, risk-taking and grit, executive function, kind of this pattern that we're seeing in kids wanting, they're being frustrated by not being able to immediately know or understand the thing, and wanting to be able to teach kids how to learn and how to successfully navigate challenges. So.
So we liked the word resilient because it suggests that you can crush this and a very specific population of kids that have success as they go along once they get to HF. Many of them have reported back, I'm finally having to do actual schoolwork for the first time. I'm thrown by it, like they're, they're completely discombobulated by what the expectations are. So one of the, one of the reasons why we're doing this is to say, once you leave Parker, you will be successful for your next step, and the next step for many kids or for all kids at high school. And so that's, that's kind of where the concept of resilience came.
Right. And for exclamation, the bullets underneath resilient are actually kind of key to definition of it. One of the things that we were just trying to make sure of is that when we envision the 21st century learn, a child who is creatively attacking problems, solving problems, but doing so not just based upon, well, I'm learning this, what is I do with this? Now you've got to take this person, here are problems you've never seen before. And as they encounter a problem, they're, they're going to have frustrations and they're going to have the confidence, challenges, and so to still take all of that and learn from that, still grow in that area also, to make themselves get more resilient, that's kind of how we kind of came about that term. I guess more of a five-part, it's called it, in a sense.
And the building leadership is now aware of this?
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about, is the next step the Chamber of Commerce? Is it different community groups, obviously HF, with all our friends and relatives? We want eyes to be on this so that, again, this is, this is our commitment. So once we choose this path, then as we are, we're having conversations around the four cornerstone, they're, okay, these four cornerstones are great, but the only great is they relate to helping us achieve this target. So we'll take it out, again, to more groups. This building leadership teams are looking at it now, and if we can add this finish by the end of the summer, I think we'll be good.
Yeah, and there's one thing I want to add, that may not, cannot initially. When our administrators went to the school where this was also implemented, they were able to see, and Amago did, we got to summarize, and so I'm just gonna say, you summarize. It's a, it's a vision that ties into the plan and encompasses the entire community. So it's not really just a, like, sheer bonus. And that's why there needs to be a lot more stakeholders involved in this, because it puts into shapes, which is your plan, that is into your budget, it really permeates the entire district. So, you know, about that?
No, that was, I would just add also, something, an important piece of this is that this list is not to say that these are not things that we aren't already doing. It's giving it a name and placing the things that we're already doing under those names and finding the gaps. So where are we not excelling in one of these components and showing that we can do better at? But there's, there are a lot of these things happening in our classrooms and in our schools, and they may be happening in pockets, but we want to pull them out to make them things that need to be happening in all classrooms.
Yeah, the one, the one thing that struck me, I don't know what that phrase was, but the way it's taken on is so holistic, that they're saying that every child that is in this school district will receive all that we can possibly give that child to become successful. And that becomes the philosophy. That's, that's very powerful stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think, no doubt, this is an awesome idea. I mean, we started talking about it last year, and I went to a session, I still can't remember the school district, who presented on it at Pi Conference last year. So I'm glad that we're thinking of, you know, this is, this will become, you know, very living and breathing documents, right? I mean, so we talked about how, whatever the finished visual is, you know, that it's something that's in every single one of our buildings. So, yeah. So what is the plan to get our feedback when, you know, over the course of, you know, the next few months?
You know, I would say, at least on this pass, if you have initial thoughts, send them over. And either, you know, send it to David, send it to Cal, send it to you, however, our group will come up with a plan. As we receive BLT feedback, we'll probably take a look, we can try to schedule something over the summer, but I'm very sensitive to just, you know, the teacher's time recharge over the summer. So we may try to work virtually a little bit, get some feedback. And then figure out, again, in the community, who do you want to talk to? You know, is there a particular pastor, is there a particular social service group, is there a particular business owner that we want to talk to to say, okay, this is what we're going to see in graduate in District 161? What do you think? You know, yeah, that's great. Or have you thought about, you know, this under a skilled communicator, because this is what I'm seeing for kids who are entering the workforce at 18. And then we'll just keep bringing it back to the board, so we'll probably, probably have a standing place on our board agenda and our cows moving forward, because we'll want to make sure that we're fine-tuning and fine-tuning before we get to approval.
Okay. Would be good to have a conversation with the village.
Yes.
About this.
And they're on our list, yeah.
Yeah, and to that point, one of the questions that got asked, once we say, yes, the village, okay, so then that's just a blockboard and a stone wall, and so it keeps, it kept growing. And it's not a bad growth, but again, it becomes that in holistic terms.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. And they, other communities will use it differently, and they will decide the best way to use that versus how foster will likely use it. But it's all a good thing, and so, you know, any way that other communities that may be into can adopt our Portrait of a Graduate, then, you know, we, we are, it's not a dotted line to foster, it's a straight line, so. Okay. Marketing materials.
Yes.
We need a discussion about, can you have, can you pull that up, Courtney?
I am. Really happy to pull this up. So this is the front page of our two pager. This will be copied onto, right now it's probably glossy current style, but all four of our schools are represented. We landed with Parker on top because there was no way to equitably split the floor, which was on the bottom. And so this was our compromise. But I think there's an opportunity here, not that it's a template, we can probably throw up a five of them, if that makes sense? The back won't change, but maybe that top picture changes and everyone has an opportunity to be kind of spot on. I think the pictures are so fantastic, they really capture just the essence of kids and buildings and the relationships and stuff. And if you go on to the second page, we have a couple of narrative pieces that just talks about who we are, District 161, what we commit to, what we provide in this community for all of our children. We have kind of a by the numbers, you know, that top right here is a little bit washed out here, but it looks really good on paper. Enrollment, our grades, our student-teacher ratio, tech ratio, just a number of schools. I'm always jealous of the high schools that can put up, here's our SAT score, here's our ACT, here's the $1.8 million that our kids got scholarships. They have so many more metrics that are objectively measured than we do, but I think this is a good start. The goal for this document, once it's finalized, we'll just, the plan is to run a huge batch, get it onto all the realtors, get it onto the community. This is not primarily for current parents in District 161, although I think they'll appreciate a lot of this information. This is really for people, well, hey, I am looking for a house. Why don't we stop, stop by the community, see what they can offer us and what we can offer them? Obviously, when the hidden gem happen, if I'm comes by, we'll have a huge stack, if not, make sure that we have those, because typically when you wear a race, that'll give you a cool shirt, you can bag it along with your swag in it. Have that as one of the handouts, it's most bang, I think it's a good opportunity for us.
I think, I think this looks great. I'm glad that we are finally there, it's something that we can see. I think the one thing that's missing, if this document is going to be used to help convince people how awesome 161 is and we want to know more information, it would be helpful to know the number of programs that we run in our district.
You know...
Because we run enormous amounts.
Yeah, we talked about, we went back and forth on that. Our challenge was there's no way to measure this, because Parker sets the curve, and then it seems disreguables. Because if Parker, we would have 100, but if you all measure these, it's really 200. And so we couldn't figure out a way to present that effectively, that people would say, oh, suddenly you had all these programs, we do, but they're, you know, all are different.
Well, we should think about it, because it's, it's all the programs we have in the district, because what we're selling is the district, not the specifics.
Oh, okay.
I mean, but I just think that's such a huge, I mean, we have so many programs, it's ridiculous. You know, I mean, and so for families, for example, you know, moving from, who live in the city, who have kids who go to schools that don't have art program, music program, right? Like, those are huge selling, you know, our whole fine arts curriculum, you know, all of our, you know, auxiliary programs that we offer after school, I mean, those are...
So you're already lost them. So that, what we struggled with was the parameters. Is it after school? Is it, do we count Parker? Do we count gift card? Do we count for our club?
Or do you mention that we have addicted, whatever we call it? Like, I, I just feel like, if, if we think about what the purpose of this document is, and if you want it to invite people into our community and want us to know more as a homeowner who has options, I'm leaning ahead. So what else does 161 have? What does 161 have that's deeply connected to that?
Well, and we privilege technology on this, we privilege technology. So it's, for me, the fine arts piece, because that's sought after by many families, especially in districts that don't provide opportunities to be able to be in there, or, or...
So maybe it's something that can be included in the narrative version, you know, I mean, but...
But we put technology in different pieces.
It's true.
So we put, so it says that if I look at this, I, I'm, that's the only programming with it. It tells me that technology is hugely important to us, so that we must have the finest club, we must do technology all the time, and whatever technology...
Sure, I would agree with technology, so that, and I guess I'd group it by, so the technology, and as Michelle was saying, art. And I look like, I was looking for a brand for 161, I would do the, the big term, like, technology, art, music, just naming those. For example, one of the things that I'm still also trying to figure out, we're also doing language, are we talking about, you know, more language, those type of things, those do things that...
The student...
Right. So we do, we do reference it. We do reference it in, on the bottom, that's the second paragraph. But really, the numbers, the thought behind the numbers, or it could be, it could be objectively measured by any... So again, it can be whatever, whatever we want. We just want to know how to, you know, once Fran and I are old, when we retire and they're gonna update this, so they're like, oh, this is how we got that number on after-school program, you know, programming or that kind of stuff. So as long as we're really clear about those parameters, we can have any number we want.
So maybe you guys can...
I don't know, I guess it would be powerful to say, I just play this.
Fine arts is a huge selling point for many sports too.
I know, I can see where you're going with it. Like, the list is advanced.
Right, the list is advanced. And so maybe it's not this document, I mean, this is, and that's the other thing, like, I'm hoping that this is not the only marketing piece that we produce for our district. I know we've talked, especially before we brought on Amy, like, you want those are the things we want, you know, so this is sort of just step one, but there definitely needs to be something else that...
Well, I think, to your point, Michelle, I'm, I honestly think, I've probably had this conversation with all people, except for you, looking at some different pamphlets, program books, I'm not sure what they are specifically, but they could be simple foldouts that identify that. We could have the whole side on, these are athletic opportunities, academic opportunities, fine arts opportunities. We could do that with a little bit more context than we can here. And to David's point, yes, we can hit, you know, because we hit, you know, last paragraph, we hit scene, we break that out, and talk about robotics and all these different clubs, but in more pamphlet document, we can add some context to it, to say, oh, you know, this is what they, and what, can you believe it, they churn out on average three state championships either, or, you know, five visits to Springfield and DuCater because they're doing next gen.
But maybe it's, Courtney, can you go back to the first page?
Maybe it's a document that looks like this, but these pictures highlight our, you know, they're more program focused, right? So maybe there's a music photo, maybe there's a sports photo, and then the second page actually goes into detail about, you know, the number of sports programs, the fine arts. I mean, here, you know, what does 161 have to offer?
This is good, but another thing.
We put that on for equal...
No, we want that, Courtney.
Yeah, no, I think, oh, this is our first...
This is a good start.
And not that we have a template, we can, we can do one solely for the fine arts.
Absolutely, for baseball players, chess players.
That's it. Number of trees.
Orchestra.
Number of instruments.
Cross-country, I mean, that isn't really powerful, because my kids play soccer and the MyLyn, and this is the play for me.
Yeah, you can't add anything else to this.
Why choose 161? But the next thing.
Now, let me say, as a person, it's a couple of these recent, more out here. When I came, when we were looking at, I didn't necessarily want my group to go to HF, but I mean, that, we do a big job, I was not a college builder. And but when I looked at all of the clubs and then how they list everything out, without me even coming to the school, I was like, if you must, then fine. But it helped re-friend the green, so.
We are unempathious, stealing ideas from each other. So this is, this looks almost identical to some documents that they have, and I am totally fine with it. We do have permission and speaking with our colleagues over there.
Can you add one more word? Can you look at off the building infographic? So what an infographic is, is that it's a pictorial representation of the things that you're still doing, but it's, it's a combination of graphic with informational.
You mean, in addition to this?
Right. I write it out.
As a digital version or a print?
Both.
So typically infographic's scroll. And, it, the, pictographic's a good one to use, that's one, like, typically used to create infographics. Let me just have, let me just have the...
Download.
Yeah. All right. Tim, but for our next conversation though, why don't we get to the website, which is building and branding currently? We'll get to the website. I mean, four weeks on that. Once we're through that process, not that any of these schedules clears up, but then I think it's a good opportunity to start working on the ground, too. And then we can go from, does that work for everyone?
Good.
Thank you, thank you.
In the meantime, we will get this mass produced and go. That's great.
Okay, next item, orchestral staff, any questions? Anything to discuss?
Anything to discuss?
Speaking of fine arts, we have so many kids, and, you know, most, to the consideration of some people, I have a public fund with kids getting both band and orchestra, and that is a musical process for scheduling, but how are you supposed to decide to play the trumpet and the violin, or the... That young, so, we want to give kids every opportunity, and that means we need to have an additional five to tie fractions.
Oh, she currently, and she's going to think...
She's already going to...
She already did that, okay.
And then I think she would prefer to be full-time.
Okay, great. Any questions? Finish the budget.
This is a very, very rough budget. It takes our projections, and it does tweak each of them based on conversation that you've already had. It is showing about a $200,000 deficit. It will not be there when I renew it to you in July. But it is really designed to be the, the budget that we start the year with, just so that we have something that was approved, that we can start spending on, and now the hardware comp. And we've already started pulling together salaries and benefits and all that kind of information, so we're in pretty good shape there. And, of course, you've been improving things as you've been going along for next year, including steam labs and those kinds of things. So that'll be built into this next budget. I will be meeting with my finance committee, and we'll go through a lot of that in the grade. And then in July, you will receive, once again, that arch book that will give you all the details of everything that is behind the spending. And, which is until July. It will give you a month then to peruse it at your leisure. And then August, I will present to you a much, a very detailed budget. Really, this is just designed to get the new year started off in July once, so that we can continue to take salaries until you approve the official budget and send to you. Any questions?
I'm sure there won't be many on this cover.
I just have one, I just have one thing. I know it was very helpful for me to understand, and I don't know if this has been passed out, or if it reaches out to the majority of support, but the fact that we're now dealing with an evidence-based funding formula, that's not understood, that's kind of something that I was once maybe franked with you. Thirty seconds.
That is going, that is actually going to be kind of the keystone to my budget this year. Because I think it's important that we look at the evidence-based funding formula, and then what we're actually doing, and kind of combine the two together, so that it helps us look at what the state's going to be looking at so far as, how they're funding us, and what we are actually doing with our funds, and then take a look at, you know, what is that like in terms of curriculum instruction and other things that we do. So I do plan on putting that really hard in this, this document, and then I'll be putting it really hard in my presentation and all this, because I really think that, that needs to be, right upfront. Now, since the state has come out with this very detailed comp. Fund transfer. So this was actually part of our plan from last year when we did our budget, and part of our plan was to move 4.5 million dollars into the operations and maintenance fund to cover construction costs, including 3.5 million from transportation and 1 million from the education into the operations and maintenance fund. This was the plan from the beginning of the year, and now it's our time to do it. So the notice will be going into the newspaper on this coming Sunday. And then on the 10th, it will actually have a, not just a board meeting, but you also have a public hearing. We will take any comments from the community, and then you'll just sign a resolution to transfer the money from Ed and Transportation to Allen.
Pretty helpful. Any questions? 2019-2020 breakfast lunch prices.
So we are required, under the National School Lunch Program, to do what's called a paid lunch equity calculation. It essentially makes sure that the paid meal prices are equal with the funds that are brought in from the free reduced lunch price meal reimbursements. So based on the KLE, paid lunch equity calculation, we would be increasing our paid lunches from 285 to 295, an increase of 10 cents per lunch.
Any questions? Summer 2020 construction...
So what you have in front of you is a very rough estimate of what it looks like to do Western Avenue and Flossmore Hills HVAC. This is the estimate from Wold, our architect. We're going to build in bid for an alternate on a generator for Western Avenue, since we tend to have more power issues there. And also, a main office renovation as an alternate, which would have to be designed still, but we're looking at an estimate of about $350,000 that we're going to come in right now. Then, of course, there's contingencies built in, fees, and the reversible cost. So right now, to look at the Flossmore Hills and Western Avenue air conditioning, you're looking at about $5.1 million expenditure for that project. Now's the time when we would start making sure that they got all of their, the architectural drawings done, and so on, so that they can hit the street with the bid documents by November 1st. So you would then be able to get good bids nice and early on.
Yeah, so we're still trying to find one, yeah, those emergency generators, but I can tell you, they've never, never missed one. I remember sitting in Western, whatever that day was, staring at Scott Hall, alert Mars, pointing at the ceiling. And, you know, guys working, everyone just came down to the power plant. The water pumps failed, pipes were frozen, and then all of a sudden, you know, classrooms were repaired, and then we had a big flood that weekend because pipe burst as soon as people walked in. So, in a perfect world, we have generators in all of our buildings. I think, in a perfect world, we'd at least have everyone that continues with this power. But I'm not giving up hope yet that there aren't any, it's either disaster relief or crisis relief funds and grants that are out there. Which of those also, you build a Flossmore, because she knows the air conditioning. But if it's not on here, it would be anything that we want to do with steam labs, you know, really construction-wise, and Serene knows we spent $150,000 and just under at each building on renovation work. So we would have to figure out what that means for us at the other three schools. But we do not want to, to put those out of this work, just so we're being certain. But realistically, that comes back to the board probably in December as well, maybe January. The problem, no, not the problem. An issue with the steam lab would be lead time on furniture, as opposed to major work. As long as we have those decisions by March, I'm going to agree.
I have a comment. When we were doing our building tours, we discussed Heather's situation with the front door and that access point, and I truly believe that that is a safety concern that I'm not willing to put off earlier.
So, if you have...
I'm saying, at this point, you can...
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm just going to give some context. So Heather, you walk into, I guess it's a foyer. You go into a small foyer. You're buzzed in, but then you have multiple options. You can go to the right, which would be into the physical plant. You can go straight, not that you can, it's all locked down, but... You have an option to go right into the distogial boiler area. You can go straight, which would be into the hallway. You can go hard left, which would be into the gym. Or you can go left, which would be into the office. As opposed to the other schools, where, once you get into that foyer, you're really locked in. Western, yes, you can go straight through a set of doors, but you also can go left into the office. Serene, Flossmore, Sisters, into the foyer, left into the office, but yes, there are doors. Heather is unique in that there are multiple pathways. As locked down as we keep them, there are just a bunch of different directions to go.
Yeah, so not, not to, not give knee to the main office or regional westerns. I do believe that they're tight. That that was my first observation when there, but Heather needs to be fixed. Just didn't rather than there.
Did that come up on that big comprehensive, you know, that list that, that we have?
Oh, school dude, no, that, that wasn't the purpose of that. So Wold will, Wold will do that. It's expensive, Fran and I talked about it. We recommend holding off for now. There's no point, essentially, they would call that, I don't know, it takes you off from Western, but there's a lot of work that they'll do around evaluating your spaces for adequacy, about your natural safety, et cetera, and that's certainly important. But it's not important until we've decided, again, what we agreed to through all of our kids, but also where we want to be in five years, and then we can, I think we should match our physical plant to those agreements. But, to your question, our document through school dude says the boiler of Heather is going to go in 2028 budget year running in 2027. You know, these, you know, it comes up in stricklers and all of these different parts, so that Fran's making her budget cheap. She's setting aside money when Scott is doing his non-stated projects for addressing those, starting to address those issues. So that, that piece of equipment will last 25 years because we're maintaining it the way that we should.
But in terms of the entrance to Heather, right now, how are people prevented from going multiple times?
That's a lot.
And can you say more about what your concern was?
You want me to say it in blank terms, an active shooter? Like, literally, anybody from anywhere, just coming into the building and wanting to harm anybody in any, that's specific to our students or anything else. But like, literally, you walk in, it reminded me of a closet. I was walking into a closet, and I was hitting, like, like, literally, I was like, dang, it's me. They're letting me in, like, hi, I look fine here. You can't see my Uzi behind my back, and now I'm in the building. Literally, I had this scenario going through my head, like, if my babies were on the other side of that door.
But how is that different, your, the scenario you just described?
Yes. So, take it in my home school, so Serena, so you walk in the door, and there's a big foyer, and like, as Dr. Smith said, to the left is the office. We have four doors in front of you, so we get our four doors in front of you. They're all glass, they're tempered, they're bulletproof, it's a little bit safer, maybe. I just was uncomfortable with no view, I think it was. It was very obstructed. You just, there was just so many eerie feelings that I got being in there that it wasn't...
I mean, you're, you're making me think of a differently than I have when I've entered it before, but I didn't realize that you were obstructing.
It's a very old setup, so you just walk in, it's like there's a little tube, you can't...
Yeah, I, I'm familiar. I just didn't think of it the way that you did. It's like, there's, there's a barrier to getting in, in all of our schools. There's a, but, I'm re-visualizing.
Any help?
Yeah, come.
None of the last, any of our school, there's no, right? Any, any, here's a walk-in, shoot, I have to pick right through those doors, the hallway, right?
That's actually probably a topic for a close session. If that's okay.
There's a barrier comes out to get forever.
And there's doors. Yes, there's doors, there's a lot of doors. They were, yes. There was never a time where I could have, as a visitor, gotten into a tarred-upged building. It just, for all of the other schools to be set up better, I think we could do better for Heather. That's what I saw. I just, I want to do better for Heather.
Is there a way for us to evaluate, or look at them, or Scott would have found, in terms of equity, if he will, in terms of the access, just so we can hear your thoughts?
Yeah, and really, Serene and Flossmore, about as equitable as you're running here.
I agree.
100%. And, and on some level, Harper, too, large foyer, office outside. It would be Western with its size. Set up, it's identical. Small foyer, office. But size-wise, it's the smallest office and largest elementary school. Heather becomes foyer, multiple directions, essentially. I mean, we can, we can add it as an alternate.
Just, we need a streamline in of, like, one, one way, and like, you're now, you're now in a building, and now you have this option, not...
The challenge there is the location of Heather's main office. It kind of sits in the middle of the building versus right off that main entrance, right? So to streamline that, you would certainly have to take up some space there, whether it be the gym, which is right there, or reroute people to go right into the main office, unless you're going to try to move the main office, which would be a completely different scenario.
Equitable, or we would, I mean, you can speculate any number, but probably would be easier to just shift it straight to the office.
And flow.
The flow, just change the flow.
But then you're talking about aggressive.
Yes.
Right, because that is the hallway for entry tonight. So, and we can have, yeah, we can add this as an alternate.
And how soft are those, or hard are those alternates? Because an alternate means, like, I know they have a couple, you know, a little bit laying around, we'll go ahead and spend it. I don't think it's a southern...
But we would first need to know what would need to be done to make it differently, to make it a different type of alternates, before we put it on this list. I would need to know. Here, we could do what we can't do, you know.
So how about, before we get to the drawing, maybe we ask Wold just to take a look and put together, just in there, and come talk to us about it. These are, well, maybe even before the auction stage, but here's some real opportunities. These are some major hurdles that you can actually fix, though, but it's a fix. And all of a sudden, we're talking about a seven-figure fix to move that over. Okay. All right, so Fran and I will reach out, and then on the 24th.
I just want to get lost in the cracks, that's all.
No, no, definitely. So what we'll do is we'll bring this back, I guess we go on to the 24th. You also bring this back for action.
Bring it back to take action for the authority to go out and bid.
Oh, absolutely, that, that absolutely, okay.
I mean, I would want, you know, authority to see and have them draw up, start drawing, because that's where your major is going to come from, next time, is the drawn case.
Yeah. We're going to bring this back to for approval on the 24th. We will bring back on the 24th, a discussion about Heather, and what that entrance could mean, and then, based on that discussion, we'll try to get the board in a position with enough information to say, okay, don't do anything, start with A, or B, does that work?
Can I, one quick insignificant question? Is the 10th sentence on breakfast and lunch? It just says lunch.
Just lunch.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
A motion, please, to move to executive session to discuss matters related to personnel. Five ILCS, what is going to be? So, move. Is second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, we will move into executive session. There are no other items to discuss on the...
Thanks, everybody. Keep careful, call you, okay?